Okay, it's recording again. Sorry, Don.
We're on again?
Yes, we're all set.
No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made, including as we speak, to make sure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by going online to HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot Southborough Town, that's all one word, dot com backslash remote meetings, one word. So having read that, we are ready to get into our agenda, which we're standing on the agenda is to is the election of planning board members and board and board organizations. First of all, I guess we should congratulate Mr. Stein on his lopsided victory and reelection. Welcome back, Mr. Stein. You never left. Five more years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Pleasure to serve.
Pleasure to have you. Karina, take us through it.
Okay, so the town had their elections on June 16th, and every year after elections, each board who has a member that is reelected has to go through the procedure of confirming their organization, who's the chair and who is the vice chair. And so for the planning board, the board has to decide who those members will be.
So as in the past, I'm willing to continue as the chair and but wide open to anyone interested in being the chair.
I nominate Don to continue to be the chair for the next year.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Mills, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Morris abstained. Thank you, I think. Another year. We're blessed. Next item, Karina.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I believe we need to reappoint Mr. Mills to vice chair, which I am now making that motion if I'm allowed, sir.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Morris, yes?
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Congratulations, Andrew.
Mills abstained. Thank you. Appreciate it. It's a tough role.
Next appointment would be Master Plan Committee?
Well, on the item here, the first thing is a quick master plan update. If you want to do the master plan committee appointments under this section, we can, or I've reserved them under after we do the ANRs. This section of discussion is just a quick update on the master plan.
Let's do let's follow the agenda. So the next item is a master plan committee update. Mrs. Latrell.
The master plan committee had set a special meeting for last Friday, the 19th, to review the visioning statement, which we received from NAFC on Wednesday, the 17th. Unfortunately, we did not have a quorum, so we will have to review that statement on our next meeting, which is July 1st. And the visioning statement is available on the master plan committee website on our Google Drive under Meeting Prep on 6/19/20. So anyone, the master plan committee can be accessed through the planning board website. Anyone's welcome to view that document and send in any comments you have to make or any notes to the master plan.
Did everybody hear that okay?
The 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 desired outcome, Mimi, is to reduce the size of the committee so that a quorum is easier more easily reached?
Yeah, we're about two-thirds of the way through having this visioning statement. It's a big chunk of our work. And in order to get across the finish line, we need to be able to meet. And we were thinking that at the beginning, having a very large committee with all kinds of input was very important. And we gathered all that input through the various committee members, through our visioning forms, through our survey. Now that we have all that input, we need to take what was compiled in the visioning statement and then complete the reports for that. And we were thinking that we could do that with a more trimmed down committee that had a smaller quorum requirement and would actually be able to meet more frequently.
Anything else? Any questions, comments?
Well, I just want to add that currently, the master plan committee is 21 members with four ex officios. And Mimi has some suggestions for where and what to reduce. And the current charge for the master plan committee can then be based on what the planning board decides. We can amend and revise that and resubmit it to town clerk if that's once it's figured out how you want where you want to reduce it to. And if you're in agreement, we can easily do that tomorrow, the next day, once you vote on that.
Okay, if nothing else, we'll move on to the next item. Approval not required, A and R, Northborough Road, 107 Simorano Drive in Marlboro. Also, Karina, are we going to be able to have that A and R on the on the screen?
Yes, Sarah, can you share that A and R? Sarah, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Are you able to share that A and R?
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. For some reason, we're a little slow tonight.
Sorry, I apologize.
I don't know what to do. I know it's just all around. It was a really super busy day. But we're getting there.
Yes.
So while Sarah's pulling up the screen, I'll give you a quick update. The applicant for this A and R is Boston Road Realty. This is a piece of land that is predominantly in Marlboro. I think it's about 48 acres, if I don't if I recollect correctly. And in Marlboro, it's also known as 107 Simorano Drive. So the property spans the town line, and there's five acres in Southborough.
6.3 acres.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, lot five. There's 6.3 acres in Southborough, and the remaining acreage is in Marlboro. And what the applicant is proposing, let me just get back, the owner is BP Crane Meadow LLC, and they submitted their A and R on June 15th. And on June 17th, we filed it with the town clerk. And we invited Mr. John Shipe, who's the engineer representing the applicant. And he is in the attendee panel. So once Sarah finds the A and R. Can you also elevate Mr. Shipe?
Yes.
So he can participate. So if you look on the screen, this is the Marlboro portion. And to the north is Route 95. To the west is Simorano Drive. And if Sarah pages down to the second page of the A and R, you'll see here on the right-hand side of the screen is Lot 5. To the left of Lot 5, you'll see the town line. And if you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see Northborough Road is on the right. And in Marlboro, the road is called Cedar Hill Street, and then takes a turn to Simorano Drive. And it's that Lot 5 to the right on that sheet, which is in Southborough. You can see there is substantial wetlands indicated on that. And they wish to make Lot 5 its own lot in Southborough. They also have to go to Marlboro and get an A and R endorsement for the lots they're creating, 1, 2, 3, and 4, in the Marlboro, in the town of Marlboro. So I'll point out that there is frontage of 410 feet approximately on Northborough Road. Northborough Road is away for access. So it is a viable lot for an A and R endorsement. And Sarah, do you have John?
Could you? I cannot seem to see, now that I'm sharing my screen, I'm having trouble seeing the attendees. I can see all of you, but I I'm having trouble seeing the attendees.
Okay, look at the very top. Do you have a view options? You can unshare the screen temporarily if you'd like.
I have it. I'm I found it, and I
John Shipe is also in the chat.
Yep.
So if the panelists want to launch the chat icon at the bottom, you'll see John Shipe.
And now John's here. I found the
Great.
There he is.
Thanks.
Can you can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Unfortunately for you, you all you can't also see me. Thank you, Karina, very much for helping me along here.
No problem, John.
Yeah, okay. And thanks for letting me in. So, um, yes, I'm John Shipe. I am a representative of Post Road Residential. I've worked with this developer for about 20 years. I'm otherwise, I have my own small business here in Concord, Mass. I worked with the project civil engineer and the surveyor to put together this plan, as Karina provided a nice introduction there. The 40-some-odd acres is includes a lot of land that's in Marlboro, which is slated for development after after many years of being contemplated for office. But in any event, what we're here for is just this six-some-odd acres that's in Southborough. And thank you, Sarah, for showing it on the screen.
Oh, you're welcome. Sorry about all the technical stuff tonight.
No, you got it covered, as far as I'm concerned. So this is pretty straightforward for what's in Southborough. However germane it might be, this is predominantly wetlands. And I think it's 6.3, 6.311 acres. Today, it's technically two different parcels, 70-3 and 70-3A. Just to clean it up, since we're going through the effort on the Marlboro land, we thought we would combine those two parcels into one, and then also at the same time, subdivide it from the land that's in Marlboro. And it results in a parcel that is that that meets the minimum square footage for lot area and the minimum frontage were greater than 150 feet, according to the Southborough zoning. So that's what we're here respectfully requesting approval, Mr. Chairman. So thank you. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
And this is a residential A, right?
And it's a residential A. Thank you. Yes, Karina.
Thank you. Mr. Mills, any questions, comments?
No questions. I'm good.
Mr. Stein?
No questions.
Mrs. Latrell?
I'm all set. Thank you.
And Mrs. Houlihan?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Mills? Oh, hold on. Any questions or comments from the public? Mr. Mills?
I make a motion. We approve the A and R as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, how will we actually physically sign the plans?
Let's let's go to the town planner for that. It sounds like we will. The town hall's open, limited ability. So in the past, we've all, over a short period of time, showed up and signed similar documents. So is that what you want to do, Karina?
Yeah, we have an option. Sarah and I can either do a run and come to each property and leave it for signature, or at your convenience, you can let us know when you can come down to the townhouse, and we can meet you outside at the picnic table right in front with the Mylar and the Sharpie for signing it.
Okay.
It's your preference.
How do we want to do it? Individually, everyone agree to one way or another, or what?
I'm fine with coming to the town hall.
I may not be able to make. I'm just so inundated at work. I think if you want me to sign it, you just drop it at the stoop, and I'll sign it.
And then you let us know when you're done, and we'll come pick it up, and then
Yeah, or you yeah, just call me. Just text me when you're coming over, and I'll
Okay.
Just get away from the computer for two seconds to do it.
Mimi?
I can come to the townhouse.
And Marnie?
Yeah, I can come in as well.
And I'll I'll show up at the town hall. So just one drop off.
We can do that.
So a motion was made and seconded. We had that discussion. Is there any more questions, comments, discussion? All in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
So we'll try to get this all signed up as soon as possible, Mr. Shipe.
And and thank you very much to Karina and Sarah. You've been terrific to work with, and I appreciate it. And to the board, thank you for trying to figure out a way to get it signed. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Okay, good night.
Thanks.
Good night. Next item on the agenda is a approval not required, A and R, 19 Ward Road. Let's get that one on the screen if we can, and also have the town planner give us the update.
All right, Sarah, in the waiting room is Ola.
Yes.
If you could possibly
I will bring her up. The A and R is on the screen.
Okay, so while you get Ola on board, I'll give a quick rundown. This is an A and R for 19 Ward Road. The current owner and applicant is Jeffrey Corey, who recently purchased this from Ola Squatka. I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, Ola. And if you recall, last year, an A and R came before us for 17 Ward Road to split the property into the two parcels that you see on the screen. You see a lot 1 and a lot 2A. So last year, we had lot 17 on the right, split into two these two lots. Currently, this A and R is for the lot on the left, house number 19, to combine with the small lot. You see a long rectangular strip in the bottom left corner, Lot 108. And that's approximately 3,200 square feet. Previously, it was thought that that small portion was on town property, that was town right of way. And the previous owner, who's Ola and her husband, had some research done, and they found out that it was privately owned, and they purchased that parcel and sold that parcel, as well as the house number 19, to the current owner, Jeffrey Corey. And they've been waiting since the pandemic hit to hopefully get this in front of the planning board. So the lot fronts on Ward Road. It has frontage. It was 150 feet. Now, I believe it'll be 520. I just can't see it that closely on my screen, unfortunately. Let me see if I can see it right here. Yes, so frontage will be 326 feet, which is good for this zone. And since the house is already on there, it was a buildable lot, which was previously done under the A and R. This is simply just combining that small rectangular piece with the current larger lot, to clarify for the future that they have one lot.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Mills?
Yeah, Karina, I'm just curious. Did they already sell the house, and it's no longer Ola's house?
Correct.
So she's doing this for the current new owner?
I believe there was, and I could be wrong, there is was an understanding that in order to get close the close on the house and sell it, that the seller and the buyer had an arrangement that one party would take care of it and follow through.
Yes. Hi, this is Ola. I don't know if you guys can hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Karina, this is correct. So we just have holdback agreements, which both attorneys prepared. And that's why it's me who is on today's meeting. We sold the house one month ago. Unfortunately, we were not able to do this two months ago. That's why we're doing this right now.
Do we have anything from the current owner saying that they want to do this? I'm just, it seems odd that we're doing it under the prior owner's request, knowing that the house is already in someone else's hands, the property.
Actually, Andrew, the application was submitted by Jeffrey Corey, and he signed it at the bottom as owner. And so that's in order.
Thank you. No, no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Stein.
Karina, you referenced Lot 108 in your description of this matter. Are you referring to Lot 104?
Yes, I'm sorry, Lot 104. I have a half-size print here at my desk.
So we're combining lots 104 and 2A into one new lot?
Correct.
No further questions.
Mrs. Latrell?
No questions.
Mrs. Houlihan?
I have no questions.
Any questions or comments from the public?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the A and R requested by Jeffrey Corey, and as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I want to go back to Sarah. Sarah, if
Yes.
if we're at the point where I say, is there any questions or comments from the public? Is there a delay? Or would you know right away if there was a question?
I would know right away. So they would be, you know, here in the participants, because I'm sharing my screen, so you can see who is participating, if they, you know, raised their hand or, you know, indicated that they wanted to speak, it would be here. And so, you know, nobody's wanting to talk at the moment.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. There were no other questions or comments. All in favor? Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Latrell, yes.
Houlihan, yes.
Very good. Thanks very much. I'll say all go.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ola. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Thank you, Karina. I will leave the meeting right now.
All right, thank you. And we will do the same approach for signing the Mylar that we have at our office.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next item on the agenda is appointment of board and committee members. Metro West Regional Collaborative.
So we pushed off some of these till tonight. And let me just get my list out.
I can pull up the PDF that was posted.
Yeah, that would be very helpful. So on the agenda, I just want to point out that we have the planning boards representative to the Metro West Regional Collaborative, MWRC, master plan committee members, and the deed research committee, which needs to be reestablished for the next year. Currently, I'm awaiting feedback from Freddie Tjolasbe, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, to see if she has somebody from their committee, subcommittee, that they want to have join Mimi and Jesse on the reestablishment of that committee. As we discussed previously, there was some funding, CPC funding, that was still available for this project to finish out some items. So we had reestablished it last year, and we need to do it again. But if we can't get the whole three members at this point, we can do it at the next meeting as well, because I know Freddie's been having trouble getting a meeting together to address that. So that being said, Sarah, you're working on the
Yes.
Okay.
Wait, Karina, sorry, just we're waiting for Freddie to get their members. So it sounds like we're going to hold off on our next meeting?
Yeah, because would it be worthwhile to reestablish the deed research subcommittee with just two members? We should really have three at least.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so that's the master plan committee. So the first item to be addressed is, at the last couple of meetings, Mimi Latrell said that she would continue on as the planning board rep for the Metro West Regional Collaborative. I did speak to the Laurie Esposito, the town administrator's executive assistant, and she said it wasn't a precedence where you'd have an alternate or not. So we discussed it a little bit, and Mimi said that she would take on that role. And if there was a meeting or two that you couldn't make, Mimi, that Marnie would attend the meeting and then brief you on it afterwards, as long as we had some representation. And I would do the same thing. If you couldn't make a meeting, I could also fill in for you.
So this list, this spreadsheet, it shows a member appointed at PB meeting date, 6/22. So there's quite a few there.
Those are the members that are slated to be appointed this evening, from whom we've had feedback. So
Yep, and they've been voted upon by their individual committees as well.
So at this point, would the it be appropriate to hear a motion to appoint those? And I guess we can name them, because there's only about 12 right now?
The only question is, was there a vote for me to stay on? All right?
There is, if you are reappointed, and they know that you were there last year, I'm not sure that it's necessary that your committee reappoints recommends you for reappointment.
Okay.
I think once you're appointed, and you wish to continue, you can continue, and the planning board appoints you.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
I could be mistaken, but I think that's how it works.
So someone make the motion, and we'll go through each of these. We'll go through all the names and then take a single vote.
I make a motion. We reappoint those on the Excel spreadsheet that Karina is about to read, who want to be reappointed to the master plan committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Go ahead, Karina.
I would just like to point out, it's reappointments and new appointments. It's a mix.
Move with the correction.
Okay, just want to be clear. So on this list, we have Judith Watson, representing Conservation Commission, Joyce Magnawskis, representing Council on Aging. We have Karen Svitkovich, representing Open Space Preservation. We have Karen Svitkovich, representing Open Space Preservation, Julie Connolly, who will be a new member, replacing Kathy Bartolini on economic development. We have Thomas McLeer, who continues on for the Shopsy Representative. We have a new school committee representative to the Master Plan, which is the Tora Martin. She was voted in the past week by the school committee to be recommended. We have continuing Mimi Luttrell as the Chair for the representing the Planning Board, Andrew Mills continuing as a representative for the Planning Board. We have Catherine McKee, who is continuing on representing the Trails Committee, William Sines continuing, representing the ADA Committee. We have me as Town Planner, Karina Quinn, ex officio, continuing on, Tim Davis for the Recreation Director as an ex officio. And we have a new Member-at-Large, Gina Glaszomiski, who submitted her interest and is happy to join. So we're looking forward to her being a Member-at-Large. And so that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 14.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Anyone from the public? All in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Luttrell, yes.
Hulahan, yes.
Very good. Thank you. What's the next one, Karina?
You have to motion for Mimi Luttrell to be the Metro West Regional Planning Collaborative Representative.
So moved.
And seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Anyone from the public?
Claire Reynolds has her hand up, so I'm going to allow her to talk.
Claire?
Claire?
You're muted.
I'm going to ask her to unmute there.
Yes.
Claire?
Yes.
Welcome to the Planning Board meeting.
Yes, thank you.
You had your hand up. We're in the middle of a motion to appoint or reappoint.
My apologies, that was a mistake. I hit the wrong button on my phone.
Oh, well, at least we know it works.
You could use this as an opportunity to congratulate or express gratitude to those who have made the list.
Absolutely.
So, okay, all in favor? Anyone else in the public? All in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes.
Luttrell, yes.
Hulahan, yes.
Very good. Karina, what's next?
So is the Planning Board in agreement with holding off on the Deed Research Committee until we hear back from Freddie? I don't see her in the attendees list, and she may not have had a chance to reestablish, so that we can, maybe on the July 13 meeting, reestablish the Deed Research Subcommittee with the members.
Very good. I'm fine with that. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Are we going to discuss the changing the charge of the Master Plan?
Oh, yes. Thanks, Mimi. So another part of this, and Sarah, maybe you could launch the shared screen with the current Master Plan chart.
Okay.
So Mimi and Judith and the Master Plan Committee have some recommendations, I believe, for reducing the size of the Master Plan Committee. Mimi, would you like to speak to that? Would you like this chart up here, or would you like the charge? Probably leave the chart for now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sarah, leave the chart for a second if you could.
Okay, there we go.
Thanks.
So as mentioned at the beginning, we're hoping to have a more streamlined group so we can finish the Master Plan in a more timely manner. We've gathered all the input from all the various stakeholders and we're ready to put it all together and put the Master Plan together. And we think that we can do that with a more streamlined group. So we went through and looked at participation rates and tried to figure out, or I looked at, tried to figure out if there were some places that we could trim a couple of seats to give us a little quorum relief. So the first is the Technology Committee. When this spreadsheet was written, there had been no response on whether or not they were going to be reappointed. But I understand that Matt did respond that the Technology Committee does want to stay involved and they're going to discuss appointing someone at their meeting later this week. So I would suggest perhaps that the Technology Committee could be an ex officio member. Then the next is the Recreation Commission. We've had very little participation from them. And I understand that Dave Candela has not been reappointed to Recreation as of the last election meeting. So as of now, he's not on the, well, as of June 30th, he won't on the Recreation Commission. And we have Tim Davis, the Recreation Director, is on as an ex officio. So we can certainly keep them in the loop through 10. And then we had three Members-at-Large, and I was hoping to trim it to one. We just reappointed a new Member-at-Large. And one of the others chose not to be reappointed, and another we haven't heard from. So I would suggest reducing the committee goes to.
So are you saying remove the two Member-at-Large seats?
Yeah, two Member-at-Large, Recreation, and make Technology ex officio would be my suggestion that the Planning Board agree.
And say again, Recreation Commission would be ex officio or remove the seat?
Remove the seat. We have Tim on as ex officio.
Right.
The Director.
And then we just have the Zoning Board of Appeals. I haven't heard back, we haven't heard back from Mike Robbins, but that is an ex officio position. So it might be important to leave a representative from Zoning Board on there and let them have a chance to catch up a little bit. They don't meet as often.
Yeah, I I didn't suggest removing.
Okay.
So, Mimi, could you make the motion?
Sure. I move that we amend the charge of the Master Plan Committee and re-categorize the Technology Committee as an ex officio seat. Remove the Recreation Commission seat and remove two Members-at-Large seats.
Do you need a second?
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion, questions, comments from the public? Hearing none, seeing none? All in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Hulahan, yes.
Mrs. Luttrell, you made the motion, but I think you can still vote on it.
I did. Luttrell, yes. Thank you.
Okay. So five to zero. Thank you. Anymore on this appointment of board and committee members?
They've been working really hard. And I just want to thank Mimi Luttrell again and her Vice Chair, Judith Watson, who's been working closely with planning too, as we interact with MAPC and try and get all the different things done. It's been going well. I know that the attendance has been a little bit low on some of the meetings, but that was a very large group to try and pull together. So thanks, Mimi.
Yeah.
And thank you. The support from Karina and Sarah has been phenomenal, as always.
And thanks to Sarah too, because Sarah facilitates the Master Plan Committee meetings. So she's there, she's running the Zoom meeting and also listening and and provides feedback to me and to Mimi after the fact during the week and during the month as things progress. So thanks to Sarah too.
Oh, thank you.
Very good. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, Open Space Inspections, FY '20. Karina?
All right.
This is a draft, so we don't have to spend a whole lot of time on it, but what was in our packet was the contract.
Right, so about a month or so, about a month ago, we had the opportunity to prepare a contract. So because the services are under $5,000, we reached back out to Lucas Environmental, who had done last year's open space inspections for fiscal year 19. And he had the manpower, considering the conditions during the pandemic, with a commitment to do open space inspections at four locations for us. And he said he could do it during this time, was happy to provide services, enjoyed working with all of us last year. So we prepared a contract for $4,900, which we negotiated to. The four locations that were proposed, and I want to point out, we've been working closely with Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, who I vetted these locations with, and we worked together to pick these four locations. So it's Stonebrook Village, which is Stonebrook Court off of Oregon Road, Woodland Estates off Kitter Lane or on Kitter Lane, Victory Hill Estates, Victory Hill Lane, and an open space area on Grasslands Two subdivision off of Flag Road between 24 and 28 Orchard Road. So three of those are town-owned open space areas. And Stonebrook Village is a private owned piece of property with open space restriction. The other caveat is that we selected Stonebrook Village because in the conditions of approval for major site plan, there were certain conditions related to open space. And one of them was a sidewalk with Open Space Preservation Commission to review those conditions that relate to open space. So we were able to coordinate Lucas Environmental, Well and Scientist Joe Orzal, who you met last year at the Planning Board meeting when you presented the findings, and Freddie, and Dan Ruiz, a representative of Capaboo Properties, to be on site to walk the open space and to add input into the open space inspection form. So that worked out well. The field work is all done. Today, I received a draft report, pretty much on schedule, we were anticipating. And it came in early this afternoon, so I didn't have a chance to look at it very greatly, but I perused it very quickly, forwarded to the Planning Board members, I forwarded to Freddie Gillespie, so she can review it with open space. And we will provide some feedback. If you have feedback individually, you can let me know during the week or so, and we will provide some of that information back to Lucas Environmental so that they can finish working on this draft. But it's substantially complete. We just have to vet it, review it, and I could discuss it with Freddie as well. They are also, they meaning Lucas, are coming to a Planning Board meeting in the future, either the July or the August meeting, to represent their findings. So, and that will close out that contract for fiscal year '20.
Thank you very much. With that, we again remind the public that these open space inspections are paid for out of the Planning Department's budget. Any questions or comments on that?
I just recall, last time we had this done, there seemed to be, there were some very obvious encroachments that were happening. And I hope that this time, maybe while the inspections are happening, those can be not addressed, but maybe that can be mentioned to the abutter or where there, if it's an obvious encroachment from a certain location, we can notify the abutters that it's happening proactively. You know, I think that might be helpful.
Absolutely. And I think one of the things we're working on is that, we kind of started this last year. We want to come up with an approach to mitigate some of these encroachments that are coming up. Whether we rank the seriousness and tackle the easy ones first or the more extreme ones. So as we're getting more of these under our belt, because you recall, last year we did 10. This year, we did four. I think in fiscal year 18, if I'm not mistaken, we did five or six. So as I'm culminating all this information, we'll be able to see what are the typical infractions. We can chart those a little better, because right now, we have the individual inspection reports. And you read through them, and you know, unless you have a super memory, okay, here, you know, five of these had this type of infraction, two had none, the others, you know, grass clippings or whatever. So as we move forward, we're going to start focusing on, you know, what the problems are and address how we approach letting those people know. Because we want to be diplomatic. Sometimes people don't know they're doing it. Some may know exactly what they're doing. But we want to approach this so that we get a really good response from the public who want to work with us if they realize what they're doing, and we'll explain it to them. So the whole goal is to stop any kind of infractions. And I think we can do that more readily if we come up with a good approach that's, you know, not super like aggressive, but let's do this for the right reasons.
But Karina, I guess what I was kind of hearing is it doesn't sound like that's going to happen at the time of the inspection. It would be afterwards. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah.
I was hoping while the inspector was there, if someone's, you know, if, or maybe we should proactively tell the abutters, hey, we're going to be doing these inspections and looking at these types of things. And we'll follow up with anyone if there are encroachments. Maybe plant the seed early with them and hopefully empower, you know, the inspector a little bit, instead of trying to do it afterwards.
Right. I just, we should have a chance to maybe think about that. I like that idea a lot. And I, three of these properties were town-owned properties. So we don't necessarily notify the abutters that were coming. When we do the, and I know what you're saying, when we do inspections of the private property, open space areas, we notify the owner and the abutters in the past. So we have to come up with a little bit of a plan, a system on how to do that. Because when someone's out there walking around in the woods, a lot of people these days are a little apprehensive if someone they don't know comes up to them, knocks on the door. So we have to come up with maybe like a badge, or he wears a visegreen or something, let them know ahead of time. So, A, during the pandemic, it was probably a little bit not as easy to do from that aspect, but we certainly can come up with some kind of plan. I think that's a good idea. So if they get an idea, then, like you said, you're giving them a heads up, and then we can. And then we can, they may stop right from there. But I like your idea, Andy. Thank you. I appreciate that. And we will do what we can.
So on the three that are town-owned properties?
Yes.
If there aren't any abutters to them, what are we looking for in the inspection? I mean, are we concerned that there are already encroachments happening? Because if there are no abutters and we're worried about, and we have no specific concerns about encroachment, should we prioritize some other properties ahead of those?
Oh, it's not that there are no abutters. There are abutters. It's just that before we do the inspection, I was just explaining that we, on the town property, we haven't notified this year any of the abutters that he's going to be out on town property. So they would have known he was out there.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
You know what I mean? So we expedited this quickly, and I think that as we do this program every year, we're going to get better at it and come up with better ways to, you know, like you said, start some of the mitigation right away while the inspector's out there, because he can explain why. And, you know, he's the expert on it. And maybe some of these will have a town representative who can go with them, whether it's someone from open space or an intern or something like that, who could assist with some of that, some of the interaction with the public. Someone who lives in town, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
Karina, Karina, can you clarify? You had mentioned you had some interaction with Dan Ruiz. Could you just clarify that? Have you already reached out to the owner of Stonbrook Village to discuss the issues?
No, we reached out to the owner because he and Freddie Gillespie, who I see is on the screen now, were planning to have a site walk to address one of the conditions of approval. So we just coordinated all at once so that Lucas Environmental had their wetland scientist there with Freddie and with Dan Ruiz to do the site inspection, to walk through.
Okay, so you haven't discussed the findings with the owners of any of these?
No, because we just got the report this afternoon.
Okay, but Dan Ruiz is just there representing Capital Group?
Yes.
For that inspection?
When we do anything related to that property, we call ahead and have preferably a representative from the project or the owner there. So they can give feedback and they can hear what we're talking about. And it helps things just mitigate if things do come up. So I wasn't at that meeting, but Freddie was. So once I read the report and Freddie reads it and we talk about it, then we'll see what kind of issues there were.
Well, Freddie, Freddie's in the chat, and she just said she wanted to say something. So can we hear from Freddie?
If I'm being called on? I can't hear you though.
Don, you're muted. There you go.
Go ahead, Freddie.
Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie. I'm Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And prior to this inspection, the Open Space Commission has been in communication with Bill De Petri and Danny. And we have also been in communication with Karina, asking to get on your board to discuss some of the conditions in the decision for Stony Brook. And then when she was picking properties to have the inspection done on, it seemed like a great fit because one of the conditions required the Open Space Commission to do a site walk. So coronavirus, you know, put a lot of this on hold, and we're trying to move as, you know, as quickly as we can to not tie up the project proponent. But what happened is before the, before the inspection, the Open Space Commission went through the decisions for the subdivision. And we went through every single one that had an open space component and made a chart of where things needed to be looked at or followed through on. Some were from us specifically, which was the location of 20 sparkle berry shrubs to be planted in the open space. And this was so many years ago, I don't really recall how that came about. We did ask that they could be straight species, not a cultivar, and they agreed. But, so I had that list, I think. You, I gave it to Karina, and you also, I think, shared it with Joe from Lucas before the
I did not, I don't, I have to check back. I didn't share it with Joe because at the time you said it was a little bit cryptic.
Yes, it was.
So what I did is I explained to him that there were several conditions in the approvals, and I forwarded him the recorded copies of those major site plan lid and the subdivision, so he could see. I think all the conditions were the same in all three of those decisions.
They were.
He had those lists.
Right. So it was evident when we went through the walk that he knew all of the concerns. And so one of the things, the Open Space Commission, I'm hoping to get the inspection that you hired out, because it will support the work of the Open Space Commission, where there are some, there are some misses, but our commission needs to meet and discuss it and like to get back to you because they can't really plant the plants they need to plant until we authorize where they go. And some of the other conditions not met in the decision are going to be problematic for that, if that makes sense. But our commission hasn't discussed what the findings of that inspection are, so I don't want to say more. But I'll just mention, one of the, one of the requirements was that there be no invasives in the open space. And I guess I can leave it there. And it also required that if there were, because the open space is all the 20-foot no-touch zone of the wetlands, that they'll need to go in front of the Conservation Commission to get permission to do any mediation work on the invasives, which means somewhat of a time commitment. But that's something that was in the decision. I don't know, what's it been, seven years or more?
Yeah, I think 2015, if I'm not mistaken.
Five years? Anyhow, so the question is, separate from your review of the inspections, the Open Space Commission would like to come back to speak with the planning board on our requirements for the decision, because we're aware there's a $3,500 bond?
Correct.
So that opens, an open space? I don't want to call it an open space bond, but a bond that is related to the requirements for open space on that project? So.
That's correct. And also note that the project is, you know, they're finishing out some of the items based on the bond that's been held via the planning board. So, and the subdivision and that project in general. So some of those items are listed as, I believe, part of that. So there is bond money being held for the project itself.
But there were quite a few open space requirements. And, you know, some were, you know, from the walk we did, were fine. But there were, there were others that the Open Space Commission would like to look at the report. I was there and I went over all of it with Joe, but the whole commission hasn't seen the written report, and we're hoping to meet next week.
Okay, and you did receive my email today with the draft?
I, I know I sent you an email. I didn't get back and see if you had responded.
I did. I sent you the link like they sent me. So you'll have a chance to look at it over the next week or two.
So I'll send that to the commission, but I'm just saying this is something separate because then you're, it's more timely than your regular, whatever you're reviewing the other reports for. So, and thank you. It was very helpful to our work to have a professional like Joe and Lucas engineering there.
Yeah, they're very good, good to work with and very accommodating. So I was happy that worked out so that we could coordinate that one meeting all together there. So, but we'll take the next steps and we'll just keep going forward. And we'll get these reports reviewed, and then you'll, you'll give us feedback on the open spaces.
So just to be clear, what I'm asking for is independent of your review of all the reports? If you think it's the right way to move forward, that there are things in that report, whether it's the report you're looking at or not, or just a report from the Open Space Commission on what they need to do to finish up that project, because we don't want to be holding them up at all.
Okay, absolutely. I think that's a good idea, because A, I know if we can time this for when Capital Group comes back or Stonbrook Village proponent comes back in front of the planning board.
I want to tune in. I think we're starting to drift a little bit from the
Open Space
From the agenda item. We're supposed to be talking about the report. We're getting into, it's okay to get into some details, but we're getting into more details on one project that's really not on the agenda. But I think the points have been made, and there seems to be an agreement on the way forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this agenda item? And this will probably be on our next, if not the following agenda when we get the final report. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item. Economic Development Commission Committee, Village Mixed Use District, V-MUD by law. And we'll ask the town planner, no, we'll ask, well, we'll ask the town planner to take it from here, but
You'll like what I have to say, I hope. Since I've been kind of hogging all this information, Sarah has been working and following the EDC's bylaw proposal. So Sarah's going to respond and update you, and we also have attendees here. So she's spearheading this project because she's extremely interested and well-versed in taking on these bylaw projects. So Sarah, it's all you.
Thanks. So yeah, we can, Marika is here, so I'm sure she'll want to speak to this as well. As you know, the Economic Development Committee has been trying to work through a village mixed-use district overlay for the downtown area.
You're just a little quiet.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Better? Okay. And so the EDC has been working on a village mixed-use district overlay for the downtown area. That would be overlaying the current zoning, the business village zoning. And this, you know, has come before the board. They have recently enlisted a special counsel to provide feedback. And so the board has received, you know, that kind of raw feedback as well as a version two that was sent to the planning department over the weekend, this weekend. So, you know, in general, you know, looking to promote additional development within the downtown area, kind of also integrating heavily new or kind of conducive design standards to kind of revitalize, I think, that area and make it perhaps look like it did a while ago. I know that there were some renderings shared by EDC in terms of visioning what downtown could look like. So I don't know, Marika?
So we have a couple of folks from EDC in the attendees room. Marika Munsef, who's the EDC Economic Development Coordinator, Julie Connolly, who is on the EDC. I also see Sam Stivers and someone known as Gail. So Sarah, you elevated Marika?
Uh, I did, and so I don't know if
She has to just unmute.
Marika, would you?
Yeah, I think I'm unmuted.
There she is.
Great.
Sorry, what, I didn't hear the question. I'm just here to observe. I thought in your minutes or in your agenda, you were, it said you received the village mixed-use district overlay zoning.
Just wondering if you had anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add. I'm just here to see what, you know, what questions might come up so I can address it and bring it back to my committee.
Okay. We do understand this is a kind of an informal starting point discussion that it's kind of like a precursor to what's actually going to be distributed to the different boards and committees for review, for feedback. We just wanted to get the conversation started so that the planning board already has an opportunity to start seeing the approach that the EDC is taking for the bylaw so that we don't have to do it so quickly overnight when, you know, this way we're already used to getting some of the information out to the planning board members. Because you know how it is, sometimes it gets really busy.
Sorry, Karina. So our aim is to just keep you informed, and that's why, I mean, you've been getting quite a few emails. And I apologize if I send another one on Saturday, and I sent the version, the earlier version last week. But this is a kind of a work in progress. So we just want to keep you updated on what we have. So you can, as you have questions, you can come back to us. I mean, we'd like to work together on this and catch anything early on.
That was our intent when Karina and I went over the agenda for tonight's meeting. It was, we both very much agreed that these, this agenda item, this will be on our agenda on and off as you want us. We want to keep it on the agenda as much as we can so that the discussion with the, with the changes, public can be fully aware of them and participate as they mature. Not expecting any action tonight or any real big discussion, but we wanted to get it on the agenda so that people will know and see the document. This is who?
Yeah, so thank you for sending the document. I saw the version two. Unfortunately, I haven't had a long time to digest it. But just trying to understand general timelines and what you, the EDC is working towards would be helpful.
We are planning to bring this to Fall Town Meeting whenever they schedule that, so that's what we are working towards.
And if that is the case, it will require a public hearing? So I think Sarah and Marika have discussed timing and the importance of when it has to actually be presented to the planning board so that we have time to have the public hearings with the required publishing in the newspapers and all that that goes with that.
I just have, I have one comment on the content. A word that kind of popped out that we don't really, or we, the planning board doesn't really get involved in, or even town government, and that word is design. There's a section, I don't have it right in front of me, but it was later in the document, section seven, six or seven, I think. And it was, the word design was in there. And, you know, reading it, it seems like it's okay, but we've known over the years that design is a hard thing to define sometimes. And also, it's an item where there's a great deal of differing opinion on what's a good design and what's not a good design. So I would just say that I, I think it's worth leaving in there, but be prepared to either further define the design standards or the design authority of the town relative to that. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I think
Well, go ahead. Mimi.
Um, I was just wondering where
I was just wondering where the Well, first, the, the minimum lot size was increased from the village business district, which is 10,000 to 15,000. And I'm wondering what the thought was behind that, because out of the 23 lots in the the downtown portion of the village business district, only 12 could use this overlay. And of those 12, only three are in the down, like the real downtown that we think of from Lata Slama to East Main. So I was wondering what, what we were trying to focus on, on the bylaw. And also I noticed that the the minimum number of units changed from the the document that I had to the one we got on Sunday was nine units per acre and it went to 12. I'm wondering what the what the reasoning was behind that. And then I have just some general the, the purpose mentions pedestrian and bike-friendly, but the the document of version two we received doesn't mention anything about either of those. Encourage village-style streetskates. The the template supplied for a village district by the state, the smart growth template says that anything over 35 feet in height will not give you that village style, especially in our small town, and proposing 40 feet. Then talks about maintaining character and architectural scale. There's nothing about historic preservation, nothing about any green space. With the units, there's nothing about affordability or workspace housing. So I'm wondering what we're trying to achieve here.
Anyone want to get into that at all or save it for the next time? Go ahead, Julie, unmute. Can't hear you.
Julie, we can't hear you. Not really sure.
Got to help her.
Yeah.
We can't hear you.
No, I don't know. In your advanced settings, maybe? Oh.
Julie, if you go into app video, there's a little icon up and you'll see video settings, go into that, choose audio, and you're likely on, you have the wrong output for your microphone.
I think we're good.
Is that better?
Yep, yes.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Marne, I appreciate it. It's a shared computer in my house, so, so thank you. So again, thank you, everybody, for taking the time to look at this before the meeting, and I'll try to answer some of the questions. I had a couple bigger picture comments, and then I'll try to respond to some of Mimi's comments. I don't have the answers to all of them. But a couple of things. Yes, a couple of people hit some important points. One, timing. We would like to hopefully present something at town meeting, hopefully with, working with you guys and with your support, which means, you know, we don't know we don't know if a certain town meeting is happening. Excuse the running in the background. We don't know for certain it's happening, and we don't know when it's happening, but assuming it's in the fall, we know how summer works and that it's going to creep up quickly, so we do need to think backwards to have, make sure we have the time we need to have whatever public meetings that, the public hearings that we need to have before then. So I think, yes, that's an important point. And I also just wanted to mention a couple of things that Mimi talked about. There, we do talk about pedestrian-friendly and bicycle-friendly in a few places in this document. I'm not sure. I don't have a black line, so I don't know exactly what changed between one and two, but I know it's mentioned in a few places here. That certainly is a point of, you know, that's, that's very important to us. That's something we've talked about from the beginning. And we'll make sure that that's reflected on there. And those, these are certainly the kinds of comments we want to hear too, because if that's not clear that that's a priority, we want to make sure that it is. Green space, same thing. You know, we've talked about from the beginning, beautification, public parks, that was one of our tenants of what we were discussing for downtown. So to the extent that that's not addressed in here, we're happy to add things like that. And as far as, Mimi had mentioned, 35 feet was, I'm not sure exactly where that number came from, but you said it was a recommendation for preserving historic preservation or maintaining the streetscape in a, in a way that maintains what we're looking for. If that, those are the kind of comments we're looking from you guys, and we're certainly happy to work with you on those type of comments. A couple of things that you said had changed, density requirements, something else I think you mentioned as well. I'm not sure what happened in the last draft. I don't know if I, I wasn't part of that conversation, so I'm not sure what happened there. I don't know if Marika can address it. If not, we can certainly get the answers to those questions as well, but this is the kind of feedback we want from you guys. So if you think that there's something that it could be better served in a different way, you know, those are the conversations we want to be having with you. And also, oh, Don also mentioned design guidelines, which I think is a, is something else we, I wanted to just touch on. You know, obviously, this is complicated, and we're trying to think about the best way to move this forward. You'll, you'll see in this that we talk about by rights zoning, we talk about some by right uses and some, some some, what do we call it? Mixed, sorry, by right uses and special permit uses. So, you know, thinking about how, what the approval process looks like. What a lot of communities do is that they put together a design board. So we would have potentially, and this is, again, just one of the things that we're thinking about, have a separate design guideline that will give a potential business owner or developer who's ever coming in to use some space a roadmap for what they're, what's expected of them, so that they don't feel like it's discretionary, so that they know what they're getting into and know that for the most part, if they can abide by these by these settings and these requirements that, you know, then they should be in good shape. So that's what we're talking about when we're talking about design guidelines. It can either, you know, some towns have it, have the, the planning board as the design guideline review board. Some towns have a separate board that's the design guideline review board. So those are just some of the things that we've discussed. So I just wanted to touch on that, and again, thank you, and we look forward to having more conversations with you about this, and we welcome your feedback in any way you want to give it. You know, either during these meetings or sending us separate emails or, you know, mark up our document, whatever's best for you guys.
Very good. Thank you. Any more questions, comments?
Yeah, yeah. I just want to I just want to mention, I want to make sure that the EDC had gotten a copy of the master plan survey that we just completed, because I think there were some questions in there that specifically relate to this and kind of the results were, survey that they, so wanted to make sure that they
Yes, they received the the survey, and then the, the survey results were discussed at the last Master Plan Committee meeting. And they're, they're posted, so.
Okay. And the only other thing too, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. The documents were sent out. I'd be curious more probably as a resident, talking about this, but I know the charge of the EDC was to help lower the, the overall tax rate, and from the last conversation we had about this for the mixed use for downtown, it didn't seem like it was going to have any impact at all on reducing the overall tax rate. So I'm wondering how you address that issue with this when you get to town meeting.
Sure, I'm happy to respond to that if it's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
So, yes, that certainly is a big part of our mission is to stabilize the tax rate, and of course, that's something that everybody's really focused on. The town is really focused on right now, as we potentially hit some difficult revenue years. You know, when we took on the downtown development project a few years ago, we saw that as part of overall community development and fostering a, a business community. And a healthy economy has things like mixed-use development, live-work-play areas, and a vibrant business center. And again, we wanted to do that, balance that obviously with what we feel like fits with Southborough and what we think people wanted based on our survey results, and you know, one thing that I did notice also from looking at the master plan survey results is a lot of the questions were similar to questions that we had posed to the public back a couple of years ago when we put out our survey, and, you know, it seems that the results are substantially similar. So I think this is something that, that the public wants. I think, you know, I, can, can we predict that it's going to make X number of dollars in, in revenue for the town? I, I don't know. We can look into that. I think there's, you know, general evidence that that, that that can occur, but, you know, that's not the main goal of our downtown revitalization project. We anticipate that'll be eventually a a benefit, but, but, you know, we think a vibrant economy and a vibrant community is, is, is the, is the benefit, and we think that, that will generate revenue in the long run.
I had a quick
Go ahead, Jesse.
Yep, so I just had a question regarding affordable housing. Along the same lines, has the Housing Production Plan been furnished to the EDC at this point?
Um, not in any formal capacity, no. I mean, it's, you know, posted as, as part of the, the CHOPC dialogue and, you know, those, those drafts are posted as part of the meeting because they're discussed at the meeting, but, but not you know, individually sent with any sort of review intent, but that could be.
I, I recommend it because this seems like a really good opportunity for us to insert some language into, into the into the, into the document that facilitates open, rather, affordable housing. You know, maybe we can discuss having a certain percentage of the residential units deemed restricted to affordable. I'm not sure what the EDC thinks about that, or have they considered that already?
Can I respond?
Sure.
Thank you, Jesse. And yes, that is something we have discussed, and John Wood, who I don't think is on the call. He is a member of both CHOPC, and I believe he's also joining the Housing Authority. And that's certainly something, you know, we, we, as you know, Jesse, we've, back a while ago, I think last summer, we came in and presented in front of CHOPC and talked about ways we can collaborate, and, and I absolutely 100% on board with that, and I think we, you know, we'd be remiss if we were going to look at mixed, mixed use and, and not talk about diversity in housing stock and not just, you know, we, you know, to the extent that we have not just diversity and that we have some smaller units, but in, you know, variations of affordability as well. So I'm, I'm absolutely willing to talk, continue to talk about that, and would love to see the production plan. I think we should incorporate that.
I can send it over to Marika, and she can get it out to the entire EDC.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If I'm not mistaken, Sarah, I believe that during the process of preparing the HPP, that Community Opportunities Group did interview a variety of board committee members.
Yes.
Okay.
Including Marika.
Any more on this agenda item? We have, two people have their hands raised, that's what I'm seeing.
Jesse.
Marika has her hand raised, but you're, you're off mute, Marika, if you'd like to.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
No, I just wanted to comment on Andrew, Andrew Mills' comment about tax income and how the EDC you know, has, is, one of the things we are working towards is lower residential taxes by increasing economic or commercial industrial taxes. And of course, we're looking at move nine, but I think the downtown business village is an important part of this, like Julie mentioned. If we can create a more vibrant downtown, that will be beneficial for all businesses and for people who want to reside here and might not necessarily work here, but then want to live here. But the other thing is that there's so many unused, underutilized lots in downtown, and part of this zoning initiative, this overlay zoning that we are proposing is to make it more attractive for investors to maybe, you know, redevelop existing buildings and utilize empty, empty lots that have been vacant for, I don't know, as long as I live here, maybe 20 years, that are currently not providing any tax income for the town. So whatever commercially zoned areas we have in Southborough, which is very limited, I think we need to utilize those efficiently and make it attractive so businesses want to you know, operate there, and we can, we can get tax, tax income from them, which will in turn, you know, relieve some of the, the residential taxes. That's all.
Can I ask Marika a question?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, Marika, back to my original question, if this is meant to revitalize the downtown, why are only half the lots in the downtown portion of the Business Village District would be applicable?
Sorry, why are only half the lots of the Business Village District? I mean, the, the zoning that we're talking about would be the entire currently zoned village business district, which is the part in the downtown. I know there's a, you know, there are three different villages, so this would be exactly that same area.
Right.
I'm not, maybe I'm not understanding your question.
I understand what the area is. Your overlay district increased the minimum lot size from 10,000 to 15,000, which makes half of the downtown area would not qualify to use the overlay.
I'm, I'm not sure about the, those numbers. I'll have to look at that and discuss it with the committee and the consultant. I can't answer that.
And do you know how the, the minimum residential units got increased from nine to 12?
No, I can't answer that either right now.
And my last question is, um, the the version that we received on Saturday, is that what you should be looking at?
Yes.
Okay.
And by the way, I think in the first section under item number eight, I think it does talk about bicycle and pedestrian friendly downtown, so.
So there are many I don't, I guess I didn't see it, but we just got this, so I haven't had a chance to really go through it, but there were many seconds that were left off of this version two that were on the redline document.
Many what? Sorry, many?
Many. Sections that were left, that have been removed from the bylaw?
Or, no, so I, I think I explained my email that we have the, the current bylaw and the section at the end, which is quite a few pages, which is called Design Standards. We removed those for the time being because we're looking at existing bylaws that we could refer to and, and also kind of remove some of the very subjective design guidelines and see which other and see which other things we can move back in there. So I think we tried to explain that in the email. And that's why we are still working on that. That's why we wanted you to just have a look at the first section of it.
Okay, but there are no lighting or landscaping requirements in the second draft that we received Saturday.
Any other questions or comments? Spent enough time. We can move on, but we're off to a very good start, I think.
Yes.
Don, this is Andrew, I just had one more.
Yep.
So I I get the the overall revitalization of downtown. The the EDC feels that there's a benefit to that to draw companies to Route 9 and that they'll drive from Route 9 in there to get lunch and things like that. But but, you know, I I've had the benefit of multiple conversations through this whole process. I think, you know, you're you're going to have to, when it comes to town meeting, quickly be able to articulate that to everyone and show the benefits it's going to have to Route 9 and then tie it to the economic piece that's going to drive down the taxes for the rest of the town or, you know, even show some stats on where you've already been able to lower the tax rate for the town and through projects on Route 9 or something like that. Because when I've talked with other people who aren't as involved, they they seem confused why, you know, we're focusing on, like Mimi said, maybe only three properties that might be eligible for this in the downtown when we have all these empty office buildings on Route 9. So it's just a comment, you don't have to answer that tonight, but that's what I'm hearing. And I think you're going to have to articulate something like that, you know, to answer that question come time when you pitch this at town meeting.
Anything else? It's great to see you all. We'll move on to the next agenda item then, which is other business properly before the board. First item is the planner's report, Karina.
All right, I'm going to move through this pretty quickly. First thing on the that I have here is currently, the Board of Selectmen are in the process of responding to requests for licenses for outdoor dining, which is due to the pandemic. And in order to help some of these restaurants be able to survive, the EDC helped prepare a kind of a guideline document, and the Board of Selectmen are now receiving applications. And we got one for outside dining at 154 Turnpike Road for Hola Restaurant and Tequila Bar. So the Board of Selectmen have this on their agenda tomorrow, and they are asking to the restaurant is asking to have eight of the parking spaces utilized for outdoor dining since the restaurant is still closed inside. So I checked the site plan, and there's plenty of parking there. They actually, when the site plan was approved, there were excess parkings provided. So it's my intention to respond and sign off from the Planning Department on this application that these eight spaces are viable to have these outdoor seating during the pandemic. These licenses expire November 1st of 2020. So these are just temporary licenses, and they will help these local businesses to somehow start coming back and survive. So that's what I'm going to do unless, if there's any other feedback from the Planning Board on this. But I think it's a good thing.
Any feedback? I gave Karina my feedback today, which is I think she's making the right decision. Any other questions or comments on this one?
I would support that.
Very good. Move on to the next one.
Yeah, Marnie.
Actually, just a quick comment. So did did Ola actively go to the Board of Selectmen? I mean, is that something that, like the other businesses in town, like Tomaso or the Vinbin, they could also do the same thing? Or do they have actively solicit versus us?
I think that they approached the, I'm not, I don't know for sure, but I would guess that they have to approach the Board of Selectmen to request this. And as the word gets out, it will probably, you know, have a snowball effect.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should do what we can to support all our small businesses.
All right, and as you probably all aware, at the town meeting on the 13th, the three zoning bylaw amendment articles 28, 29, and 30 were postponed, quote, "to be referred to the Planning Board for further study hearing and report to the next town meeting." So the reports that were provided by the Planning Board in support of those were filed with the town clerk this morning. Just for the record, he advised me that that would be a good idea. So we'll see what happens as we approach the fall and what town meeting will happen at that point. And I'm happy to also say that the planning budget was put back to original budget prior to the pandemic, that we didn't have to cut anything. It was felt that the all the things that we list there are very important. And so that was approved back to the original budget. So we're happy about that, so we can continue the programs we've been working on. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else. Oh, we are working on some small revisions to the Chestnut Meadow subdivision entrance. They had to move the two landscape walls with the subdivision name on it slightly away because of some further towards the roadway. There were some conflicts with utility boxes there. So they had to make some minor modifications that as well. I reviewed that pretty stringently, and I'm going to follow up with the engineer. It's actually better where they are because there are some swales right there to the detention basins, which are now more open. Other than that, I'm also working with 136 Turnpike for some, they're upgrading the building itself interior in the interior, and they have some landscape updating they're doing based on what was there before. Some of the trees were in not such good shape and such. So I'm working with them as well to make sure that what they put back there is what's approved. A good, you know, if we can get some plus out of that. So that's another positive thing. That's all I have, Don.
Excited, thank you, Karina. Next item is approval of minutes of our June 8th, 2020 meeting.
Don't move. I make a motion we approve the minutes from our last meeting as written.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Will Crowe, yes.
Will Hahn, yes.
Very good. Good job, Kate, as usual.
Yeah, thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for July 13th. Any other items, questions, comments?
We've accepted the application and filed with the town clerk today for the Chestnut Hill Farm barn reconstruction for major site plan approval. So we'll be putting that in the paper for next Monday and the Monday following. So the public hearing will open on July 13th. We'll be receiving the documents from Sarah and shortly.
Mr. Mills.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Morris, yes?
Mills, yes.
Stein, yes?
Will Crowe, yes.
Will Hahn, yes.
We're adjourned, thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Hope to see you all in person soon.
It was a pleasure seeing you.